All right, it's seven o'clock, we're gonna call this morning meeting to order, please. Stand for the pledge. Mister Craig, please.
My pledge, I release into the line of the United States of America. And to the real public for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and a just for all.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Daniel.
Chair Cochran.
I am here.
Co-chair Craig.
Present.
Commissioner Rule. Commissioner Bartholomew.
I am here.
Commissioner Swanson.
Present.
Commissioner Pestner. Commissioner Bush. Rule is complete, we have a quorum.
Chip, you did not hear from Chris?
I have not, no.
Okay, the public is in the seat virtually, but you know, uh, platform Zoom by clicking on the barber by telephone or in person at City Hall. Uh, has everyone had a chance to look at the agenda and is there any addition or removals in the topics?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Craig, hearing nothing from any of my compadres, I move approval of the agenda as published.
The motion. Thank you, John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, they're carried. Other comments, comments may be sent to the planning commission secretary Danielle Chashenko at clerk@cityofordy.org by one P M. On the day of the meeting and will be read into the record at the meeting. In case of a question, the chair will refer the matter to the appropriate administrative staff member. Comments that come in after the deadline will be read into the record at the next planning commission meeting. Oh gee, uh, minutes for November. Someone had a chance to review them and are there any, um, corrections or additions to that?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Craig, um, under absent Commissioners Rule and Pestinger and, uh, I moved and Dan Commissioner Swanson, um, seconded to excuse, uh, Commissioner Rule and that was approved. That needs to be added. Well, it's there, disregard. It's in a different place.
Oh, I see, it's different.
Disregard. I spaced spaced right past that.
Anyone else have something they've seen or?
In that case, Commissioner Craig, I move, uh, approval of the minutes as distributed.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so carried. Okay, this is gonna be the first, um, pre-application review, which is, I'm really interested in. Um, we're going to hear A D R twenty twenty five zero five, uh, ordering Eagles remodel. And, um, you can afford Daniel, who's doing.
So, again, like you mentioned, this is our first pre-app, so very informal. Um, what you have in front of you is information that they presented ahead of time and then additional information printed off, um, that I received this morning. Um, I'm not sure if anyone via Zoom is in attendance for the ordering Eagles, um, but I have spoken with several several different members. Um, I think tonight we're just gonna review what they've presented and see if you have any initial questions right off the bat that they can address at the January meeting.
Well, I understand their their reasoning for changing from the wood siding to the, um, party plank. I know the, I can't remember when they repainted the building, but it doesn't seem like it's been that long ago and the paint has just popped off and everything. Um, I think that, I think, how do you think it's gonna look the same as it does as what the building is, correct? I mean, is that similar size?
Mm-hmm.
Style?
Yeah, similar size and style. I know that they're gonna be relocating a couple of their like faux windows just so that everything's lined up and cohesive. Um, I believe they're replacing a door with one that is like for like. And then, um, they're adding a belly band around the whole building to kind of break it up so it doesn't look like a huge mass of building.
It's been at least fifteen years since they painted it.
Yeah, they men- mentioned they wanna avoid that cycle. They're like, we keep just painting it and we see how it looks now, so they really wanna, um, they did some, um, they raised some money and so they wanna invest that back into the building.
Wow, I like the, I like the red unless they change it again. They talked about they weren't gonna remove the siding, they are just going to paper over it and cover it with the hardy plank, is that correct?
From my understanding, yeah.
I didn't hear that was saying.
Yeah, and they're and they're gonna cover up windows that are covered on the inside so they don't exist on the, you know, they're non-functional.
That, um, are you talking about the windows on the bottom or the main floor?
Well.
They're not, they're not gonna make them dummy windows anymore?
No. They. Right, but, but if you look at. Okay, there are gonna be windows on the bottom, but they're. There's no. Door or window here because they're gonna relocate it and slide it over so that it aligns.
Okay, this one, they're not showing the window there.
Yeah, well.
You're doing it or not doing?
I'm guessing they're, they talked about it, but I'm guessing they're not gonna do it because, um, that's right in the middle of the kitchen where the refrigerator is.
Okay.
So it would be, that's why it's covered up currently.
Right, so are these look like, so they, in the client line, read this, it sounded like the windows on bottom, which are covered now, you can't, they, you can't see out, they're still leaving the windows, but they're just gonna make them look more like they're real windows, but they're just fake windows?
Correct, um, I would take that, uh, the rendering that you received this evening with a grain of salt. Um, I think that's more to show like the color and like the extended trim and the belly band. Um, I believe in that rendering, it does look like they're actual windows, but they will be faux windows. So they're gonna be covering up any windows that are visible on the east and the west side. And I know there are a couple that aren't lined up, they're kind of off-center, and so they're gonna be relocating some so that it's, um, can consistent across.
Or symmetric.
Yeah.
Original packet, where the, this, when Alexi that I'm here, they don't show that faux window there.
No, like I said, I had, I believe that that's an A I. Rendering and so I don't think it's a hundred percent correct, it's more just to give you an idea of what the finished building's gonna look like.
Yeah, I believe they were gonna put a fake window in there because the other window is fake also.
Right, I, I knew everything on the bottom was fake, but.
Except the door, both doors.
You can't, okay, you can't do that. The, um, I do like the fact that they're, you know, that they're wanting to make them look like more like windows and not just blanked out, you know, white plywood. That's gonna look better, these tender windows, that's, that'll be nice. Um, did they give any reasoning why? Right now, the original has got, you know, these panels below, and then I noticed in this packet they sent tonight, they're mentioning that, but. On their, um, on this rendering, they're showing that we got the original packet, they're showing these, looks like wrought iron, are they removing those panels that are below the second story windows on the front? I mean, I can't tell.
Don't believe so because in the additional packet, they sent over kind of a hand drawing, which looks like what they have up there now. I think it's just, I think what they, like, Daniel said, it's just an A I. Rendering.
These are the type of questions we're looking for, though, I'm gonna be compiling all of these together and letting them know what they need to address for the next meetings.
The little wood panels might still be behind this ironwork, but I'm just curious if if it is or not, are they, are they doing something with the the panels behind?
Well, and also, if you look at it, in the the blue one, that's the existing, there's three sets of double windows. And if you look at both of the new pieces, only the middle window stays double, the others go to single window.
Well, and I also notice, if you notice on the second story, the, the, the little column design, uh, you know, detail is double columns on the top, and they're, they're gonna take, they look like they're moving those just to make them single columns all the way across.
There's double columns on the top and it's also, you know, the double capitals that hold up the lower roof of the door, I think that's all A I., but I would like, if they are gonna make a change, I think we need to see architectural drawing, what's gonna be in front of the rooftop.
Yeah, cuz, yeah, I, I'm curious, cuz, you know, see like on, on the door, the way the building stands right now, there, there are double columns on each one of these, this is double column, it's white down, a blue column, double on both sides, and they're not showing that on this.
From the rendering, yeah, I believe that that same look will be consistent, I think, um, as far as the front of the building, from my understanding, the main change is they're gonna be extending some of the trim. Um, I, I, I think part of it is not connected all the way right now, and so they're gonna bring it all the way across.
Well.
Well, they're, they're, they're removing the corner blocks here.
Yeah, the, the.
They're launching the windows, they're removing those and matching them up more or less with the second story tram.
Right.
Which, um, I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
I actually think it looks better with it in the the proposed as opposed to the corner block.
We, interesting about the way the building stands right now, with those, I can't remember what they called those corner blocks, but, um, it almost looks like it's, like, that was the original building and then they added a second storage and did it different. It really, you know, it, it doesn't particularly, you know, go together, I really, I do like what they chose in here, I'm not sure about the ironwork, but.
They haven't mentioned any of that in writing in any of their, um, any of their changes or any of their notes, so I don't believe that is included.
Well, if you look, I mean, the, the one that came, page fourteen of nineteen, shows the ironwork and what we received tonight, um, doesn't show ironwork up there and doesn't show anything below the windows.
What about that hand drawn one again?
Yeah. That supplemental.
We'll be back. Oh, I see, this part is not out.
Right, that one doesn't have.
Doesn't have, it doesn't have the panels or?
That's just an A I. Rendering, yeah, of, of scheme.
Right.
Uh, is this, is there a tendance just to replicate what they have?
Existing window upstairs, yeah.
Oh, so they may not be changing out the double windows?
No.
No.
They're just.
I think, I think they just generated that thing, they just understood, this isn't short.
By looks at that stuff.
Right.
It's like the same thing you watch those videos, like, no, that can't be real.
Look at the sign.
Yeah, well.
Yeah.
And on their, on their A I. The. They, uh, on the big one, it shows eighteen oh four above the middle windows on the second floor. They got it right on the smooth copy, smaller one, page fourteen of nineteen, nineteen oh four, and that's actually true.
Anybody know what those three link chains are between the nine?
Yes, that's the Odd Fellas logo.
Really?
Yeah. Yep. A lot of times you'll just see the, the three rings and they're different colors normally.
Did not.
Yep.
Are they changing the front doors?
No, doesn't look like it.
I believe the only door that's changing is on the east side.
Yeah, they're putting in metal door.
Yeah.
The one on the, this, the.
Yeah, they call them.
They're talking about.
Um.
The handicap ramp.
On the, uh.
On the other side.
On the working notes. Uh, they don't talk about the front changing doors. Um. On the east side, they're changing a door, putting in a new metal door and trim.
Is that on this side, the city hall side or the Harmon Way side?
Harmon Way.
Harmon Way side.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
I think what you talked about was upon the.
No, it's gonna be on the city hall side.
On the city hall side. There's two doors on that side, are they changing both of them?
Let me double check that, that might be incorrect, looking at the picture, I think it is the Harmon Way side, which would be the west side of the building.
Okay, so that should be up there. Um.
That was one of my questions, I wasn't sure if it was, um, if they're replacing a door with like the exact same type of door, or, um, if they had any other specifications for it.
Okay, it is the the Harmon Way side.
That's the utility side, nobody can do that.
Right.
It is. I like it, that'll get out of your way, I think that'll work, help to break up the building.
Yes.
Oh, okay, we're talking about on the Harmon Way side, they're talking about taking that corner pilaster, moving it out to the very end. I wonder how successful that's gonna be. That wood is old, I can't imagine trying to pull out and move it. That would be interesting.
Moving which?
They're saying, he's saying, they're saying here this, that pilaster is right there on the corner of the old building, they're trying to pull this off and moving it out to the end of this building. I'm just curious how successful they're going to be trying to move that whole, pry that old wood off that building and reuse it. I wish him good luck, I really did it. Yeah, that's interesting. The, um. Do the, let's see, we have a page here somewhere that said, and it had the colors on it, they had them made with the colors, maybe.
Yeah.
Do we happen to have actual paint chips for those colors?
Mm-hmm, um, I provided them with a stack of paint chips that we have for pre-approved colors. They had reached out several months ago, just, um, originally intending just to re-site and repaint, which wouldn't require an A D R. Uh, but once they started talking about the design of the windows and adding trim, um, that's what kicked this in. So, um, I do have those physical paint chips I can get to you.
It looks like green and a foresty green and a rusty red.
Yeah.
Uh, it's a brick red.
Brick.
Yeah.
I like the thing green color, that'll be a little.
Yeah.
Looks like they've done, done a lot of work trying to decide what to.
Oh, yeah, they have.
If you can show, I, they, um, I don't know if it said anything about a sign, but I noticed they have a sign on their little pump house or whatever that is on the side they usually stick out, are they gonna, are they, are they gonna, um, continue a sign there or, I don't know if we're even gonna push that, I don't know if that even came up, we might have, but, um. In their proposal, are they saying that they wanna put a sign on that side of the building as well as the front?
Uh, there's no mention of it, I, I can add it to my list of things to ask them about, though, on the pump house.
What their signage, you know, are gonna be, what they're on. I don't mind having a sign, it's corners, it's a corner building, so they should have, you have a sign on, you know, that side and the front.
Well, and that's a real small sign.
Yes.
Considering the, considering the surface area of, of the building, oh.
That is a very small, but, well, on that, uh, that Reader Ford they have out there, I, is there actually their name on that?
Yes.
I see, I don't even notice it's there, so it's probably not written. You don't even notice what, what it says, I know it's Eagles, I've driven past them many times, so I know that's what it is, but, um, the signage and stuff, I'd be just curious what their plans are with signage, you know, where they wanna put it, how like, how big it is, all that sort of stuff, aside from just the, the signage on the front.
Definitely.
They're gonna leave, I don't have that on there.
Mm-hmm, I was, um, that's on my list of things to get from them as well as they did indicate or say that they would be placing a new sign, but I haven't gotten any, um, measurements or materials or design of it.
They're gonna put it, it's a solid, what that tree?
And a theater.
I think it was ever a theater.
Get inside and look and you can tell.
Well, I know, well, they used to have like a bandstand in there, a big stage and where they, they, but it wasn't really a, a theater theater. Um. You know, like those seating, you know, attached to the floor and that kind of thing. But they did, I know, yeah, they used to have a big, you know, I'm saying a really beautiful stage, but I didn't move here since nineteen eighty and it was over the bottom when I moved here, but they, you know, had a big, beautiful stage up there where the bar is, you know, how they got that second level, that's where there was a big stage up there on that end. And I haven't been able to find anybody that has any pictures of that, I would love to see pictures of that. No. I, I'm excited to see how this all comes together, cuz it's, they got a lot of really cool ideas going. I do love those colors, I think that green and cream color is gonna be really pretty.
But thanks for allowing a lot of field to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it takes it more into the correct time period than the blue and white, wrong color, blue.
I'm not sure, well, sure, how that got there.
If you can see blue, I mean, a- anywhere but the front.
Did they ever replace the building that, that car driven?
Yes.
Did they?
Yeah, you can see, uh, in. Uh, one of the pictures showed it.
Oh, there's Irish green.
This. This is, this is where the car went through.
Oh, okay. They replaced the fence too?
Yeah.
And I didn't really get sense of, I remember, I've got pictures of everyone.
And, and, yeah, I got the video, uh, and, and they also redid the lawn inside the fence.
Okay.
Do we need to make recommendation or just your notes is all that's required?
Um, a- anything helps, if you guys have any recommendations you wanna give to them right now, I can relay those. Um, the whole point of this is, we did not have all the information needed and we wanted to avoid ha- making them resubmit an application and fee and go through this again, so anything that you want addressed at the next meeting, I would definitely, um, bring up right now.
Yeah, 'cause our, our new rule said we can only care at once, so.
I would say if there is an architectural changes to the front on the design, it must be really specified in the location.
Okay.
Uh, if they're gonna use A I., the A I. Needs to accurately reflect what they're gonna do instead of just be a pie in the sky.
Mm-hmm.
That's, I mean, you know, when you look at these two pictures, there's considerable difference in these two pictures and a lot of really, um, distinct trim things are changing. And so, yeah, if, if this is just, you know, some kind of, you know, pie in the sky thing, we need to know what they're really gonna do and a, and an example of that, we don't wanna get burned again, you know, so we wanna know what you're doing, I mean, exactly what it is and what we're approving or disapproving or denying.
And they need to address signage.
Yes.
And, yeah, sizes and placement, lighting, all the way. I was thinking, and also being general before they bring us back.
You're, on page sixteen of nineteen, you've got highlighted in yellow, need, trim material specifics, hardy lap sighting specs, measurements, et cetera, new door specs and finalized rendering. Um, I think the packet we got this morning.
Mm-hmm.
Or that was sitting here when we came in, uh, addressed the, uh, trim materials and the sighting specifications. Um. Didn't specifically give us the new door specs and we do need an accurate finalized rendering and they need to talk about signage.
Okay.
It would be helpful too if they had, um, a sample of the hardy plank that they're planning on using, you know, to show us what it's gonna look like and actually how close it is to the fat board that's apparently on the building, so, you know, what you see in a picture isn't always what, you know, it actually looks like.
The other piece too is, if you look at the, um, the A I., uh, the smoother A I., uh, page fourteen of nineteen, they are using more than just the three colors. Um, because, okay, they've got the, the, the buff color for the body of the building and the green for the, uh, soffits, but the pillars, two different color pillars and neither of them are the red, the buff or the, uh, uh, so they need to add those two sets of colors also. Cuz looking at it, there's one, two, three, four, five colors on this drawing, but there's only three colors given to us on the, uh, paint sample color. So they need to specify the other two colors.
I'll confirm if they are including those additional colors or not.
Unless, of course, the, all the, all the, uh, columns are gonna be the green, but.
And then, um, if they don't have the physical hardy plank available, I'll see if I can at least get like an item picture or some kind of specs for it.
Significantly, significantly different than exposure to.
Okay.
Cuz they're calling out a ten inch plank, which is a major reveal, and what they have now is probably most of six.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, it's gonna be a lot taller, like.
Right, this, this almost looks like it's, you know, like B board when it's so small, and then you look at this, the space in here, and it's definitely, you know, a wider space. I'm also curious if they're, you know, the rendering shows a different landscaping and I'm curious if they're planning on doing something like top and landscaping in front of the building or even all the way around the building.
Not that I'm aware of, I don't think they've mentioned any updates.
Yes.
It is a ramp.
No, the, the A I. Does not show, it's not a ramp here, like it is here.
Well, okay, yeah, this.
Curious because.
Missing the railings.
They're moving the road, they're moving the whole.
Yeah, they're moving the whole room or something, follow, um. I'm, I'm just assuming, when they start messing with the, um, the, the siding and stuff and people gotta work, then they're, if they tear, I don't know if they're gonna tear off this, the corner blocks or not, but when they start messing, they're gonna be all in this, um, uh, landscaping, and I'm just curious if they have a plan for what they're gonna do once landscaping gets trashed.
There's actually total walk around between.
Is there really?
Between the current landscaping and the building, yeah.
Wow.
They mentioned they'd be cleaning up the landscaping, uh, but no significant changes or removals.
Oh, yeah, cuz when they decorate for Christmas, they, they get in, in amongst and around behind there and.
Okay.
They put blow up critters and. Oh, yeah, depending on who does the decorating.
A lot of people like those blow up critters. Would we be able to add to the instructions of the application that A I. Rendering is not referred?
I would be happy to do that, yeah.
Well, yeah, this is our, if anyone is not, it's a, uh, you know, redo of the exterior in, you know, professional architectural drawings.
Well, I think in a, in a concept presentation like we're seeing tonight, A I. Is potentially a little bit more acceptable, but if they show up with just, this is just a finger in the air. Right, yeah. To get input.
I do, I do think the clarification on the site of reveal needs to take place because they call out ten inch hardy plank. In some of the changes and the materials, but in that, unless they call out, I'm hardy plank lap siding with a seven inch exposure, which is an eighth of a quarter inch. By hardy plank lap siding with a seven inch exposure, which is an eighth of a quarter inch.
Yeah, they need to.
Insistency, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not, uh, I don't know what kind of funds they're dealing with. They may not go the whole architectural route.
Yeah.
They, I, a lot of the stuff I've seen done at the set that Eagles has been pretty much volunteers by the members and. You know, craftsmen that they have, you know, in their.
It's like they're concise.
Oh yeah, just so people know what they're doing.
We can, we can reduce, you know, it is community, it's community involved, uh, multiple people.
That's what I was gonna ask is like signage is one thing to have a rendering, but as far as the building to omit that, as long as they. Are clear with their intentions and what's exactly changing, is that something you guys are okay with?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't wanna muddy the waters or.
I, you know, I'm definitely like, you know, a visual, so I have an idea of exactly what we're both looking at the same thing. I, I am really gonna be surprised. I, when I read this, they're talking about moving these pilasters from corners to a different location. And this building was built nineteen oh three or whatever, four. And that stuff, you know, it's over a hundred and twenty years old. I will be shocked if they're able to get that wood off and reuse that same wood somewhere else. They, you know, they just, then they have a really good crasher, I don't know.
Um, I have that. I would say I have that listed in my notes to clear that up. I, I think some of it they wanna try and reuse, but um. Specify what new material they're gonna be using for.
If boards don't make it, after, what are they gonna replace it with? You know, so that would be nice, cause um, there's gotta be a plan B, cause I'm not sure that they're gonna be able to do what they think they're gonna do. Cause, I mean, I, I have an old house and, yeah, we planned one thing and then. After that plan B, cause planning did not work.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I, I love what they're doing though. I think it's gonna be gorgeous. It's gonna be a real, you know. Uh, a little chance with the city and the community, so, yeah.
I think it's amazing.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely. It's so funny, when you look at pictures of hoarding. And most, all of them, it's really funny, cause the mountains down here, and so almost all the pictures are taken from Baguette Town, down Main Street, you know, you see the mountain. And this building is in almost every single picture. I only have one that the building's not here. And it's, it's a shot, you know, with the pictures, the, uh, the photographer was shooting down the railroad tracks. There's lots of railroad tracks back there. And the building's not there yet. It's, it was, it's an eighteen ninety four, I think. Before, and, but in most of the pictures you see of this town. The mountains in the background and this building is in front, so I'm really glad that they're gonna, you know, try to, you know. Fix it up and do something that's gonna maintain it for a long time. And I think that hardy plank is really gonna be a good idea for what's, you know, what's happening. If anybody has any other, um, something that comes to you after the meeting, please, you know, email Danielle and tell her, you know. What, you know, what your thought was, so she can, uh, pass that on to, uh, the applicants. Anybody else have anything else to say? Otherwise, we'll move on to the next. When I shuffled my bill, there it is. Pre-application meeting for forty express new construction. This is, um, I didn't have my glasses on, but I think it's five nineteen Harmon Way.
Next to the firehouse.
Right, um. Firehouse is gonna lose their property, that won't be good.
And, uh, we do have, um, the applicants in attendance too tonight, so if you do have any questions, they're available to answer those.
Okay, so the preliminary is, uh, recommendations made and. They'll get back to us.
The, um. There used to be a gas station on that part. A long time ago. The original L and M was, um, a gas station. The. What is their plan for, uh, mitigating the fact that this residential house right next to? This, uh, piece of property and it backs on to a whole bunch of residential houses. So do they have any plans for mitigation for, you know, the privacy of the homeowners that live? On this, uh, street.
I'd like to serve as well, cause I imagine there's probably gonna be a twelve or fourteen foot tall lit canopy or office. Which is gonna shine right in back of the house just.
Yeah. I know when, uh, this, when the sacred shopping center was built, one of the mitigating factors that we required of the developer. Was this, the main, the six foot wood fence and maintenance of the six foot for maintenance. And they planted, um, Arbivide all along that, um. That, uh, that curb right there behind the buildings to help to shield, um, the light. From going into the backyards and the houses on, in White Hawk there. Um, some people have plant, have planted more Arbivide on their side of the fence, but, um. That's been the responsibility of the, the owners of this development to maintain the, the fence and the, uh, the planting. Um, I see on this thing that, wow, it looks like the house is right on the property line.
Sure, I think, I think I've some of your questions too, they're, they're good points. There must be applicants who should just come off the meeting and address the chair's questions. Okay, I'll just go ahead and dive right in. Their valid questions are exactly the kind of thing that I think about from a CBA perspective, when I'm like a business. Um, and that's definitely one of the things that I think about is, uh, you know, how is it that this project has been mitigating impacts to residences immediately adjacent to it. Um, and my thought has been exactly that, uh, you know, then especially above verb and the, uh, you know, by coming to responsibility of the applicant. The applicant's responsibility via CBA to show that they, um, are gonna mitigate their impact. And there's like thirteen environmental, like, uh, focuses of CBA, they include inflator and they include noise. Um, and they include compatibility of adjacent land uses. And so all of those things are required for the applicant to show. But they're not having an impact on the base camp, the city is the, as some CBA responsible official has. The, um, you know, uh, responsibility of being able to require mitigation. Um, and so, I'm, I'm CBA's, um, CBA responsible official, it would be part of my mitigated determination, not significant sort of tire things like. Um, vegetation, planting, fencing and some sort of solution for the down fast light, um, all structure we, we just. But this applicant's gonna be coming into the city in a couple of weeks and have a pre-application conference with myself. I'm the official city engineer, public parks director, so they, these, uh, these sort of development. Um, you know, components or considerations that fall outside of just the design element will be discussed in the, you know, there for that maybe one step.
Yeah, I, I was sort of surprised when I saw what the property line was, um. In disclosure, this touches my property. Um, but I was shocked with how close, I didn't realize that, that the house. Um, that they sat so close to the, uh, the property line there. That does, I mean, it. I don't know how many feet that is, but it's not very many.
Well, and the firehouse is not very far from the property line either.
Well.
None of those buildings were far from it.
Well, it's funny, see the original firehouse, the original L and M. Um, was an old house on that corner. And the original owner or the, the one, the person who changed it from a house to a business. Um, he actually had the house picked up and moved back on the prob, moved back working in corner. And he had pumps and stuff in the front and it was a little grocery store and then it turned into a restaurant and a dance hall and all this stuff that went in there. And that house, that, that structure was still here when I moved here. It burnt twice and after the second time burned it, you know, that's when they tore it down to build the L and M the way it is today. Um, but I just, you know, that property is really strangely laid out.
Do we know what type of fuel? I mean, is it a, is it a, it Chevron or a? Arco or do we have any clue on that?
I should have done the fuel, on the fuel side of it. So my first question. Yeah. So my first question is, uh, I'm looking at, looking at their pad for their, um, under, their underground storage tanks. UFCs, um, do, do they know any, do they have any idea what tank size is gonna go with at the moment?
I can ask that during our meeting.
Okay, and also, um, I'm looking at it with perspective of, uh, delivering fuel there. Um, usually typically the truck that holds them there is about seventy-five feet long. And has capacity for eleven thousand four hundred gallons of gasoline or ninety-eight hundred gallons of diesel. Uh, but two tanks, one on the trailer, one on the truck and two spare points. So, um, you gotta be able to accommodate for that, be able to pull in and safely drop fuel. Um, I would recommend finding a way to have the fills, um, within. Within ten feet of, of this area right here where the truck would normally pull in. So look at this, you're gonna have a fuel truck that's gonna come down and stop pulling to the share right away. And it's gonna pull up through here and then egress here. So you wanna be able to line the passenger side of the truck with the fills. And be within, within, um, a certain, you don't wanna stretch out too much hose. Um, you don't want your fills to be way back here, because what will happen is, is that the, whoever supplies the fuel will charge them additional fees with their merge. And, um, delivery times and that gives to the bottom line. Uh. And it's also, it's also just safer. Um, and also their vapor recovery system, um, I would recommend. That they manifold their tanks, their vapor recovery for the tank. Because then if you have second, there's typically a gas station, you'll have your regular tank, your eighty-seven, then you'll have your premium. You know, had your, looks like they're gonna have diesel too. We, we call it diesel and the premium secondaries and then the primaries, your eighty-seven. Um, if you have two products, like you're carrying premium and regular. If you have a manifold tank, you can use one vapor hose, vapor recovery hose, and it's just a lot easier and the delivery goes faster and more efficient and, uh. Again, that will add their bottom line. Um, and whoever has to deliver fuel to the station will, will go on there. I go to a lot of gas stations. Um, and then, yeah, what, what, you know, I was, I was, I'm just curious, um, what, what, if they're gonna be a branded station or unbranded.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure I could get on that note again, the applicant. And they can come off the meeting and address the questions. All of these questions, very helpful, yeah.
Excellent, and then also they're gonna have other, uh, trucks too, other vendors too, as far as, uh, like delivering food, delivering drinks. Um, and those are more of your traditional semis. And, uh, you know, you have to accommodate place for them to park and offload without disrupt, cause it's gonna be residential as well. Without disrupting residential and without, um, disrupting, you know, customers. If you have a truck that's seventy-five feet long, you're gonna get blocked and something. I don't want.
You're pretty much gonna shut the place down while the truck is sitting there.
Yeah, it's not a, right, it's not a very big block, so if, if they're gonna fuel delivery, it's.
And the other question is, okay, and this may not be their problem, but. Uh, you notice that the firehouse. Sign, the, the fire truck is currently sitting on their property. Where, where is that moving to? Or is that gonna be allowed to stay?
All that American LeBrant's in there, that's fifty one to the tree.
Okay.
That truck's all best. Nice, I, I love that.
Yeah, yeah.
They need to restore it, really.
I can ask that question, that the, uh, the, the property owner that owns the firehouse is the property owner for this law.
Oh, okay.
Joint access off of the existing right away, uh, gonna be fairly easy for there to be a covenant that's secured with the. With the property to be able to ensure that access across the park is provided, so, um. He just has to shake his own hand.
Gotcha.
I had, um, looking at this. I'm, my, I'm very concerned about what the canopy's gonna do and how much light's gonna come from that. Um, and is there any way that, um, the, the canopy and the gas can move? Closer to, you know, further south than it is. It looks like you should, you know, most of this is utilizing the north end of the lot closer to. The one resident that's still there. And I realize, you know, the residence in a mixed use town center, but that, um, that house was built back in the. Big forties, fifties. And, um, it's always been a, you know, resident. I'm sure he didn't raise his hand and say, change my zone for next use. Um, but I'm just, I was just thinking if there was some way to move, move it closer. I see that they've got a lot of parking slots marked off and I'm sure that this, especially now that I know who the owner is. That, you know, their savings, cause he uses that lot for parking for their tavern, so.
Well, the, the canopy, just guesstimating from the dimensions is gonna be like. Twenty-one feet by fifty feet, so it's a fairly sizable canopy.
Yeah, I was just curious if there was any, you know, if this is, if this was the only rendition of, you know, of placement of the building and the canopy. On this lot, or did they try other things to see if a different configuration to got, get that canopy further away from the residents?
Right, yeah, absolutely, oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, some of the, if you see some of these tribal stations, especially that they, they follow, they, they follow that historic architecture. Um, their canopies, they incorporate this historical design in the canopies. And they do it a way where it's, uh, where it's, it can convey some of that. You know, I mean, you have like a, a faux wood with skater shapes. Not, not saying do that randomly, it's just an example of what I've seen, you know. And maybe that's something that they could consider. Perhaps. When they design their canopy. Instead of just a generic, you know.
Do we know?
Yeah, Ron, or what, whatever.
Right, do we know what, um, uh, what hours of operation they are considering? Is, is it? That'd be something I'd like to know, you know, if it's twenty-four hours or, you know, I know some of these, these newer stations, the. The way the pumps are set up, it's all electronic, that people can stop and get gas anytime they want. So we're talking about lights that are on all night long. On those canopies.
Well, and it'll be interesting because with two apartment units of, uh, above the convenience store. Um, their canopy lights are gonna just totally bathe the. Bedrooms, because the bedrooms are right there by the canopy.
Yeah, I would, yeah, where they set the, um, the, the units up, I wasn't crazy about the fact that the, the entrance to the. Are on the back like that. It, it just feels weird, like people coming and going out of the back of the building, um. I don't know. Yeah, I, and, yeah, I looked at that too and I was thinking there's some way if you turn to the, you know, cause it's, it's a forty foot square. So you can place it however direction you wanted, but then I don't know if I was in unit two, if I want my balcony looking up those tanks either.
Yeah, looking, well, looking right into the backyard of, of the house sitting there.
I think it helps to ask that there's residential, it's on top, stairwells.
If they, you know, I don't, um. The way that's the stairwell there, I see designed, it looks, you know, really, um. I, I don't know, second rate. To me, it needs to be like maybe a deck all the way across. And, you know, and, you know, more purposeful, not like, you know, oh, let's stick apartment up here and throw, you know, throw some stairs up there. It, it just, it looks second rate and, you know, cheap and cheesy and just, you know, something that makes it, if you look at, um. Where D and D did to their, uh, their unit down there on corn. Their, they've got a deck that goes all the way down the side, you know, with a roof on it, so like people, you know, like you can come out of your, you know, your apartment and sit on the deck if you wanted. And, you know, it looks more purposeful, like we built it, that this was something we're proud of. This, you know, when they have just a set of stairs and a little stoop to stand on. It looks, you know, like I just decided to throw some people upstairs and they added. Yeah, I, I don't care the way that, where that's designed at all, it doesn't, I don't think that benefits our community.
Except you can't see it.
That doesn't matter. That doesn't matter. I I'll be able to see that from my backyard.
We all have our personal problems.
Yeah, and there's, I don't know that I would want my, but you're going to look, we're like the gas station.
Yeah, yeah, no, I would, yeah, I don't, I don't, yeah.
Fuel odors and.
What do they, yeah. Environmental hazard, would that be living cover or gas station like that?
Oh, wait till someone spills about a hundred gallons of gasoline.
I'm, oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what the aesthetics for living like, living here or.
Or wait till, wait, you tell the first person cross drops diesel into the gas tank and uh, you have to pump it out, you got trucks out there running, pump pumping another ground for hours.
Yep.
At three in the morning.
This is my first proposed vaccine for residential public gas station, I think that uh, will be portioned to have the department of all, we will with this one, um, they will, will be those, you know, those, see the and so for them to be able to weigh in on the fact of those kinds of concerns.
This, this is actually though, the second, because the shell, when they put in, you know, redid the food mart, upstairs is living, although it's set back.
Yeah, well, the upstairs. I mean, we had a meeting with friends up there, it's more like.
Yeah, it was, but it was originally intended to be a living this comp, you know, facility.
There was an imp, it it was implied that maybe the manager might wanna just live up there.
Right.
But, but, yeah, it it was, it, I think it's set up to be, you know, like an apartment, where someone could live there, you know, if they choose to. But I'm gonna, you know, who wants to live above a gas station?
Right, right.
Like.
What about the oriente?
I was gonna say, in that northeast corner, is there already an apron cut mass sidewalk there or does that need addition?
No, there's not already. But there's no, there's no, uh, sidewalk that for you. What about the?
Then I'm looking at the typical, just on what they're gonna have to look look forward to when it does come before us is they've got trash and recycle sideways that are, which is gonna be fenced and screened. Is that also the trash for the residential units above? And if, you know, if they are dumpsters, how's a truck gonna get into that? Sideways.
Yeah.
Then soft dumpster area.
Now, without these things, I don't know, you know, taking out some bent, bent posts and bars.
Yeah, I see, oh, I see what you're trying, yeah, that, yeah, that's not.
Well, unless it's uh, unless it's fenced and when the truck pulls in, it pulls in in front of the store facing northbound and opens up the gate and slides the uh, dumpster out, dumps it, pushes it back in, um.
Now, that'll end up appearing on our business.
On the dumpster side.
Actually, the, actually, there's uh, Oddfellas in Auburn has that situation.
That falling out.
Yeah.
Well, you know, some of these places that are, you know, like that are more or less grandfathered in, they've been here a long time, long time before all the ADRs came in. But, well, if we're doing a new build, we need to try to look at that ahead of time and avoid that problem.
I mean, the simplest resolution would just be to rotate it.
Yeah, and just have like a gate and then unlock it and.
Yeah.
Service it, back out and.
Yep.
Yeah, Kim, you were saying something about orientation?
Yeah, I was curious what the commission's perspective was on the orientation of site earlier, you haven't been given very much, we look at from that perspective, but I know that even more features, one of one of the at themes or plans of the art of the design guidelines is for the structure to be street oriented and then parking to be where here of the site, you see, um, it's looking a little different here, the um, due to the point about you confusing bedrooms of the fuel pumps and then, you know, this, if the, you know, gas station facility, convenience store itself from one on Harmon and then oriented this upstairs and of course, the the right of way might be more appealing slightly than, I mean, um, you know, fuel pump, might be one keeping with the guidelines of special design in our city. Um, I don't know if there's any, uh, any thoughts or uh, desire for inspection about that, any plan?
You know, when it comes to the gas station things, it's really hard to, you know, to decide on some. That's when I was, when I was looking at this, I was thinking, what would happen if you were to take that, the the building and move it uh, up closer to Harmon Way and instead of the um, the gas pumps parallel to Harmon, if they were down here going the perpendicular into that, you know, that parking area there. So it's more, it's closer to the commercial part of this area. And then the two, even though the store's on the bottom, it, you know, a living space would be more, you know, um, conducive to the the house that's sitting there. But I, I don't know enough about about the design of gas stations to know if that would even be, make sense.
The ankle accessibility.
Yeah, well, yeah, you would definitely have to, you know, come in and park and, I mean, I've been to gas stations that are like that, are kind of weird, you have to come in and turn, go in and then go back out. I don't, you know, this being an ordinary, I can't imagine this is gonna be a high-volume gas station. You know, it's not like Costco where they're backed up, you know, ten cars in a row.
Well, the other piece is it's not just the vehicles that are gonna pull in and pump. It's the delivery tanker.
Yeah.
The 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 delivery tanker is the primary consideration. Uh, and then the food delivery trucks are secondary. And the actual customers are tertiary, uh, as far as the the access.
Fill, the 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 location of the fill gotta be as, I think, as easy as possible for fuel to.
Well, you know, that you look at, I mean, I realize he's making parking for the tavern as well as
Right.
probably for the convenience store. But if there was some way to move that building up closer to Harmon Way and move the the station part, the actual pumps further closer to the tavern and maybe put parking toward the back or something, I don't, I don't know. I I don't know enough about how they design a gas station, that, how that works. But I just, yeah, I'm not crazy about this design at all, and I don't, um, that I still can't wrap my head about living up in uh, above a gas station. And if those pumps are, if those lights are on twenty-four seven, oh my gosh. And I haven't seen any of those, any of those canopy lights, I mean, even they shine straight down, it's still a huge glow, no matter what. I can't imagine, you know, how they're planning on making that, you know, an acceptable living situation. Yeah, it's, it's. I'm surprised that anybody's putting another gas station, we got three. I've never seen a back-up line in any of them. Sometimes safely, yet the way.
Well, that power outage there, that shield station.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they need a, uh,
Yeah.
A generator or something, yeah.
Well, you're gonna get all the, I think he's marketing all the tractor from the butts in that area.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's, it's, interesting concept, not crazy about it. All right, any other questions or we'll move on?
Just a quick question, yeah, is this the only entrance to the firehouse? Or is there an entrance on the other side?
No, that's the only entrance to the firehouse.
Maybe adding another entrance up that northeast corner for coming in and out.
For this, for this lot, not not with the L and M.
Gets the same people, so.
Yeah, no, no, yeah. Well, it's like, you know, when you go into the Texaco Station, they've got, you know, there's actually, there's three ingress and egress areas. But really, the two on either end are supposed to be one-way. I realize the purpose north one is not always that one-way. But they're not supposed to come out that entrance, but they do. But um, but that only leaves when you come, you know, you come in that, the first one. And you can come in or go out the middle one, and then the end one, you think, you really can only turn right, because they've got the uh, way the street's laid out, they can't get out there, but, yeah, it, um, it'll be interesting to see what they have to say. Be interesting to see what Steve says.
Yeah, it will.
Okay, let's move on. Old business, dumpster violations. Did we hear all of them from last one?
Well, um, Danielle, I think you're right about because I came intentionally, I came through and the Arrow dumpsters were not there.
Okay.
However, they have to push those things, they they currently have them in the yard, just inside the gates at the end of aisles. And if they were to just pivot them in place, the truck could pull into their yard, dump it, slide it back and then pull to the next one, dump it, and then come out the other entrance, and they would never have to put them out on the street. Um, it's, I don't know what they use to, if they use manpower, it probably takes four people to move their dumpsters out to the street. But the traffic safety hazard, having those dumpsters out on the street for even an hour, um, with the the amount of traffic that goes through that intersection, um, it's unacceptable to have those out there.
I I feel like, um, I would have to look into the code, I don't know if there's anything that specifically would require them or keeps them from utilizing that space, but maybe we can send them a recommendation. Um, if there isn't a code that I can cite.
Yeah, well, dumpster on a public right-of-way? They can't park them there illegally, it's a, it's a public right-of-way, they can't.
Again, I don't know the code, the in and out, I do know that there's like, um, I believe parts of the code talking about dumpsters where there can be certain times, like for offloading and onloading. Again, I don't know if that has anything to do with right-of-way or specifics. But I can try and look into it, see if there's a code I can cite, and if for some reason there's not, I can see if we can recommend that they leave them.
Cause, cause having driven by there and seen them, parking them inside their fence,
Mm-hmm.
uh, I thought, wow, good, they listened, they got the message, we're doing great. And it looked like the trucks could get them by just pivoting them just a little bit where they were sitting. So, okay, so a truck, a garbage truck has to go through their property, big whoa.
Unless the, unless the garbage truck people, we swap out, we don't, we're not going in there. That could be the problem, I don't know, I, you just think it's a question to be asked. Because, yeah, they're not.
If you're trying to come out where they have their propane.
No, no, it isn't there. No, it's in the actual lumberyard part, is where they're keeping the dumpsters.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And and even if, since they have one by each entrance to the uh, to the yard, um, a a truck wouldn't even have to go through the yard, he could just pull in, if they just pivot it right there, boom. And then move around to the other one and pivot it and boom, and gone.
I know when uh, when I was still teaching, uh, my classroom was on the back of the building, you'd see that dump truck, kind of, they were, they had to go down the road the wrong wrong way, one way going, one, the, they were going the wrong way, one way. And then you would see them, you know, and there's no space behind that building. And they would pick up those, uh, on dumpsters out there in the back, nobody moved them, the trucks moved them. You know, they're, you know, hooked them up and, you know, dumped them and then, you know, pulled back. But yeah, they uh, I mean, they made an effort to get, to get, pick them up without having, because I don't know, they might be huge, much bigger dumpsters, I don't know. Yeah, it is, it's a good question to ask and see what's the problem, why can't you just leave them there? It's not even just a whole of a discussion with D and M to get them to, I don't, come and pick them up.
I think that what might be a good next move for us, since we've tried this with the property owners countless times, um, you know, we're gonna be checking Murray's about this situation to our franchise agreement. Um, our franchise agreement with Murray's has some specific language about the expectations of uh, pickup service and where that's located. Um, Murray's and the city that they're really, uh, uh, agreeable relationship in that they come to us and they have challenges with any of their customers in town and the city is responsible to those and so uh, make it, and then for the city, uh, for back to get scratched.
Sounds great.
So, and particularly if your city does not have a book, not if they're right now, to be able to dedicate full, um, efforts towards on this, it it might be uh, better for me to work with the assistant city administrator, to contact um, Murray's about the franchise agreement and see what they have to say about service provider factor.
Yeah, since, you know, I'm, I'm almost, I I agree with Jeff, I'm pretty sure that the code does not allow them to park those dumpsters on city property, this city right-of-way. And so if we can get, you know, and particularly that particular intersection, more and more and more people are coming up and down Eldridge to avoid, you know, the the lights and stuff at the corner and the traffic. So it is a really busy intersection right there. And the tiny bays and baked, that dumpsters out there, you cannot see very far down that road to get out. And it it's really, it is an extreme side safety hazard. And if we get D and M or Murray's, whatever they want, oh, D and M's with all my bill. If, they, you know, we get them to, you know, acquiesce something and come inside the, you know, lumberyard, pick up the dumpsters inside at the off.
I will see with just a quick search of the code, there is a portion that talks about containers at curbside. Um, it says, unless directed otherwise by the contact, contract carrier, container shall be placed at curbside on a public street or private road on the scheduled collection day and shall be removed to their proper storage location as soon as possible after collection.
Definition. To me, a dumpster is not the same thing as my garbage can out there. Because we have, we have to drag our garbage cans out, but I don't, it's sitting on my, you know, the city right-of-way out there by the road. But, um,
Let's see.
So that incrust.
A customer-provided garbage can or a contract carrier-provided detachable container, drop box container, recyclable cart, recyclable container, or yard debris container, or other contract carrier or city-approved cart or container for the storage and disposal of garbage.
Yeah, it'd be, you know, really easy for the exercise and ability to take this, where the container, um, you know, if it's allowed to be on the day, sort of, there's no effort, it's been serviced, it needs to be scrapped. I believe that that message has been shared, um, right, I've been in the form of more times.
They have been good about it, their pickup days are Mondays though, so usually when we're coming to the meeting.
Right.
Their dumpsters out there.
Right. Uh, that's why I intentionally came by that way this evening.
If they're still out there.
Yeah.
Comp, it's, you know, it's the safety problem for this.
I agree though, that intersections.
Where those dumpsters go.
Difficult to see it.
It's really, I just hate to see somebody, you know, uh, somebody hurt.
Well, and Arrow, Arrow's gotta gotta benefit to not having them out there by the number of people that it takes them, unless they use a, they could use their forklift to move them out there. Um, but if they're pushing them out, those are four-person dumpsters.
Think it could very possibly be, you know, that at some point D and M told them, you know, you gotta push those out, you know, so we'll pick them up. And maybe I like him suggesting, let's talk to them and see if we can, you know, work out something just for the safety of the community, as that's really busy intersection, yeah.
Sure, yeah, and maybe too, I mean, at my own personal property, I I'm, I'm nice, I mean, I need to agree to allow them to drive down my road because their trucks are really heavy and private and so yeah, it might be that Murray's, you know, gave a similar message as well, they love her, her arrow, so um, we we can, we can try and chase this down a little bit, you know, yeah, maybe some other, I'll use, other, there was my.
I'm guessing the dump trucks or the the garbage trucks aren't a whole lot heavier than some of the uh, semis that, and and Arrow trucks that drive in and out of that lumberyard.
Well, I know, I have a friend that's up there on two hundred and um, she was told that it is part of the road. And she was told that if, you know, we wanna turn around in your driveway, and if you won't let us turn around in your driveway, then you're gonna have to drag your cans all the way up to the OK Highway. And so she says, no, with water cat grab, and you can turn her hat and her truck, right? Because, you know, but I mean, you know, so, yeah, there are things that, you know, that the garbage company does say.
Oh, yeah.
So maybe we can, you know, uh, you know, plead on the, you know, just the safety and of this, you know, the whole thing. Because, yeah, our Arrow, look, I guarantee it, the trucks can go in and out without, you know, sinking in anything, that's shouldn't be a problem. But, yeah. And I know, like I said, when I worked at school, I was shocked, you know, they, a dumpster comes down, it, I mean, that dump truck comes, the kids all up, stop, we have to, we'll have to watch the garbage van. But, yeah, so they they can go to places that are pretty tight, but, um, yeah, let's, it's certainly gonna push from somewhere different, because Arrow seems to be doing what they can do. And, you know, what they've been told, so maybe we need to find a different route. Okay, let's move along then, sign code.
Were there any other dumpster violations this way, Sarah?
I hadn't.
I haven't seen. I haven't seen any.
I had not. Uh, sign code violations.
I know last time we talked about random signs popping up, uh, temporary signs throughout town, we did touch base with Public Works. And now that the elections are all wrapped up, they're gonna do, um, kind of like a nice overhaul as they're picking up trashes and whatnot and disposing of those.
Most of the election signs are down.
Yeah.
Except for that guy Bush.
We were waiting until, we were waiting until, um, election signs were down, that way it's super clear about what's not supposed to be out there, so they can go and pull everything.
Well, yeah, especially since, well, the, uh, they certified the election today, so.
Awesome. All right, then, moving right along, good for the order. Anybody not going to be there in January, and Danielle provided us with a brand new, um, two thousand and twenty-six, planning officials, our first meeting is January fifth.
January the fifth.
Twenty twenty-six, enjoying back in person.
What it does?
It says twenty-five on the.
Oh, oops, at the bottom.
Yes, it does.
So I'm hearing, I think I'm assuming everyone will be here. Uh, any report on the council meeting?
I can pull that up real quick, I've been kinda out of the loop on that one.
I think years past, they tried to get stuff done in November, so they didn't, they only had one meeting.
I know we just, um, put out another revision of the budget, the goal is to have that finalized at the next meeting on the tenth, fingers crossed, so we'll see how that goes. Um, I know titles twelve, thirteen, and fifteen were talked about at the last meeting, and we're having a public hearing at the upcoming meeting on December tenth for those. Um, they went over who they're gonna be giving, um, a city grant to. Let's see, I can pull that up real quick. I know, Ording Farmers Market, Ording Food Bank, Ording Senior Center, and the Opportunity Center are, um, a couple of organizations in, in the city that are gonna be receiving grants. And then I believe they approved the twenty twenty-six Murray's disposal rates, which those will be starting on March first.
They going up again? They are, well, it's the B and O pass, so they had to, of course. Did they, uh, did they, uh, they get the, they put a needle on that, uh, Le Boon dredge?
Um, I believe they were still finalizing contracts, I must, I wanna say that they have all of that done now, but they do have a solid plan in place on how they're gonna be addressing that. As far. Yes, um, I know that that is a big topic of discussion at the Public Works Committee meeting this week. And so we'll probably be seeing a lot more discussion at the study session meeting, but everything is kinda on plan for that. I think to start next month.
Then we can come in to help with the, uh, like the, like the oversight, what was that project manager firm?
ABA?
Right, I have table for danger.
Yes, and so that would be just for an on-call contract for construction management. Hmm.
What are they doing?
It is on-call services for the bridge and Kansas Street, and most of what else.
Who's been doing that now?
I believe Parametrics has been doing it, but, um, so they're kinda just looking for some separation.
Is Parametrics still part, still working for the city?
Hmm, they, they're helping out with a couple of projects around town.
Thank you. These two, uh, as far as agenda, um, the two things that we heard tonight on the pre-application, are we gonna hear those in January, or is it further down the road?
Um, as of right now, January. Hmm.
But not, not the, um.
No, I'm so sorry, yeah, there, that is a, um, just the Eagles will be coming forward in January. The Harmon Project still has to go through our city staff pre-application meeting.
So Eagles, dumpsters, and signs.
It's gonna seem wicked, you know, let's come on.
Uh huh.
Uh, all right, we are on number eight.
Uh, Madam Chair, Commissioner Craig, move, we adjourn.
There it goes, thank you.
Those posts, so Harry, everybody have a merry, merry Christmas.
Yes, and a peaceful and happy new year.